Welcome everybody to the May 1st Board of Trustees meeting of Village of Flower Hill. Let's please rise for pledging allegiance. AJ, please rise and raise his right hand, Ron.
Right hand.
I, AJ Smith.
I, AJ Smith.
Will support Constitution of the United States.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge duties.
And I will faithfully discharge of the duties.
Of trustee according to the best of my ability.
Of trustee according to the best of my abilities.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks.
Thank you. So before we start, I have a very long statement read up Brian Harrington, which due to the other public hearings, I won't read in depth, but I will put it in my merson's letter. So I want to thank Brian Harrington. He recently resigned from Board of Trustees due to a well-deserved promotion at work and increased out-of-town travel. Brian was with the village for 10 years, started first as trustee, moved up to deputy mayor, and then he became mayor, where he successfully ran that year in 2020, and he won by over 350 votes. Brian did a lot while he was on our board, most specifically two big key events. We had the COVID-19 pandemic, which Brian shepherded us through closing Village Hall, having to provide all of our services remotely. Our worker, our employees were working remotely. We needed to pivot with our budget because one of our biggest line items after taxes is permits, and our current revenue pretty much dried up. So Brian did a great job of adjusting our budget, working that accordingly. And then we had Hurricane Isaiah's, which came shortly thereafter. Brian had to deal with all the large power outages. Some of our residents didn't have power for a week. He was very smart and opened up Village Hall as a cooling home center, charging center for everybody who needed that capability. I want to thank Brian because he stayed on the board. After he decided not to run for mayor, I kind of begged him to stay to help me out with the transition, which he rightfully did. And I want to thank Maria, Michael, and Kayla for sharing their dad and husband with us. I know he missed a lot of baseball games, skiing, and all the other family activities in order to help serve the village. So thank you very much, Brian. Next order of business is I'm going to appoint this man, Mr. Frank Genes, as deputy. And I want to thank Maria, Michael, and Kayla for sharing their dad and husband with us. I know he missed a lot of baseball games, skiing, and all the other family activities in order to help serve the village. So thank you very much, Brian. Next order of business is I'm going to appoint this man, Mr. Frank Genes, as deputy. You're on the opportunity committee.
That's correct.
And certainly you're on the board, so open your doors, Mike, deputy mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
And mayor, they actually did the oath because trustee Genes has to also sign the oath before his term as deputy mayor.
Oh, I have to do the oath one more time?
The one more time?
All right, all right. I, Dr. Yeah, sure. I, Frank Genes.
I, Frank Genes.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
Duties of trustee.
Duties of trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
You mean deputy mayor.
Deputy mayor, yes, sir. All right, let's get to the public hearing. I would like to make a motion to open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
One more favor?
Aye.
That's seconded with a question for open. Okay, first public hearing on the agenda is a hearing on proposed local law H, and that's to amend section 85, day 5, F of the Village Code entitled Building Construction Issuance of Permits. And what this amendment will do is allow permits for construction of a new home to be extended from one year to 18 months, as we found that because of the scarcity of materials and just the complexity of construction these days, it's very difficult to construct a new home in just 12 months.
Right, so this was the suggestion of our building inspector, Department of Building Superintendent Peter Obinski. It's just something he was saying that it would be probably easier on the office to deal with longer, slightly longer building permits, and it'll be easier for our residents under building houses. So I think this is a new local law that makes a lot of sense. We're not going to vote on it tonight because it's the first hearing on it. Any of my trustees have any questions on this? If not, does anyone from the public have any questions? That being known, I will make a motion to, sorry, to adjourn this.
Adjourn.
To the June 5th Board of Trustees meeting. Do I have a second? I'm sorry.
One favor?
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda is a continued hearing on landmark designation of Elderfield's Preserve.
Just by way of update, in between the last date and today's date, by way of recap, this is the continued. Question before the board is whether or not the board would be designating the Elderfield Preserve, which is located within the village, but on Nevada County, under the Village Code. In order to respond to various questions that came up on the last date, I did provide various documents that could be posted. I think they were posted to the website last week. I'll just briefly review what they were. I included the prior decision of the Landmarks Commission, which recommended landmarking. I included two reports that had been considered by the Landmarks Commission. Those were reports talking about the aesthetic nature and the history of the property. I included, for the review of the board and anyone else who wished to review it, the existing deed between the county and the prior owner. And some major points within that are that in the transfer, the premises are to be held by the county as a historic preserve, that the premises are to be held in perpetuity, and the park trust is a public park, which is, I think we mentioned last time, is an important point because in order for a park to be changed, you're alienated, as they would say, you would need approval of the state legislature. Then no more than 25 parking spaces are available, except for vehicles of the county. I think if you were to drive over there now, you'd see there's a small parking lot as Monk goes inside. And that no material alterations, additions, installations in the architectural style, design or arrangement of any portion of the exterior or the interior of any building or fixture can occur on the property without the approval of the Society for the Preservation of Long Island Antiquities. I think there were found the last day I mentioned, there's a third party that's involved in the deed, and that's the society that has to review and consider and approve any proposed change. And then if there were to be a transfer of the property, the restrictions would remain in place, and they'd be binding on any future owner. When the county attorney's office was here, Mr. Burzine was here, they had made certain representations. One was that they would close landmarking. On the other hand, their argument was that they would be willing to extend to the village and agree with the village on a series of restrictions that would protect the property. I'll just briefly review some of what they had previously mentioned. One of that, one of those was that they would agree that the property would not be changed in terms of its use, that they would agree that the property couldn't be sold, transferred, conveyed in a way that would happen without the approval of the village. And that hadn't been specified as much in a proposal by the county. They have since submitted a document, which I'll also provide to the board, and we can put to the website, which would in fact guarantee to the village that there wouldn't be any sale, transfer, conveyance, assignment of the property, or change of use without the specific written approval of the Board of Trustees.
And Jeff, when you say the written approval of the Board of Trustees.
Yes.
Would that mean that the board would have to have a public hearing on that matter?
It would have to be in a public session. It would not require a public hearing, but the board would have to, as with anything else, meet in public. It would have to be noticed because that's the only thing the board can act, and the board would have to act in public as a board in order to make a determination.
Okay, so if that was to theoretically happen, the community would be able to know about this and be able to give us input?
Yes.
If this was so changed?
Yes, it could not be done on those.
Perfect, thank you.
In addition, and this was mentioned before, but I just wanted to recap, and then certainly the county attorney's office can speak. By the prior deed and by the current agreement, the county would agree to maintain and repair the property in order to preserve its architectural and historical integrity, and that there wouldn't be any demolition, construction, alteration, or remodeling without the specific written approval of the Village Board of Trustees. There was a question before, just in terms of how these, the set of covenants or restrictions would work. They would do as called running of the land, they would find current owners, and anybody else who comes afterward would have to follow with the same restrictions. So that's just a brief review. The distinction that I had mentioned before, and I'll just briefly review that here. There was a question about what was the difference between the landmark section in the code and the covenants. Under the landmark provisions, which I reference in a document that I also asked, and I think Ms. Shatner was kind enough to put to the website, so this document is available for anybody who wishes to see it. An application for a building permit for a landmark structure would have to indicate that it's been identified as being one. No structure can be constructed, altered, repaired, moved, or demolished once designated as a landmark unless the Board of Trustees approves. And the review of structures being considered as landmarks, and this is sort of an important distinction. While it is true that that would have to go before the board, the review is limited to exterior. So the distinction here is that the covenants and restrictions we spoke about would deal with interior and exterior. So I know that that was a quick review, but as I said, all of these documents are available, the ones that I referenced, as is a longer memorandum than my little speech here tonight, if anyone wishes to review them. And with that, I know Ms. Burzine is here from the county. I don't know if she has any further presentation to make, but see.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Blenkoff.
I'm sorry, could you identify yourself?
Yes, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Blenkoff. I think everything that you've stated.
I'm not sure.
Your name and your check, and your header, and your title.
Out of Burzine, One Last Street, Meniola, 11501.
Your title.
I'm the deputy county attorney of your estate. Good evening, everybody. I believe that Mr. Blenkoff had mentioned all of the pertinent 11 points that I had sent to his office regarding Elderfield. The biggest point that we may change this week with the addition of the number eight, which I may read again because I think that is the one that is most important, which states that "Neither the premises nor any portion thereof shall be sold, conveyed, leased, or otherwise assigned to any person or entity without the written approval of the Village of Flower Hill through its Board of Trustees, nor shall the use of the premises or any part thereof be changed without the written approval of the Village of Flower Hill through the Board of Trustees." And again, as Mr. Blenkoff had mentioned, the original deed had many restrictions, which, once this is filed, I think will be a lot more protection to this beautiful home, more so than just marking it as a landmark. And we are very happy to work with you in preservation of its history, and we have no intention of selling it.
If I may, Mr. Blenkoff, one other point that I should have made earlier, but didn't. And speaking of Ms. Burzine before, one of the things that I hope will be important for the board to have as it considers and deliberates over this is that the deed that we've received, as I mentioned before, is a number of lots identified. I've asked that the county mark up a survey of the property and just color it, just to be sure that we're all talking about the full site, that nothing is left out. Ms. Burzine has agreed to provide that. I don't know that it would need to be a new survey necessarily, as long as it's a survey that shows that we're talking about the full site.
How many lots is it right now?
There is section three, block 193, and then there's lot 23, 24, 12, and 79. So it encompasses the whole entire premises, even the land in the back. Definitely will not be touched.
Okay.
It'll remain as a preserve.
And my point is that any, I'm not, please, come on. Ms. Burzine, I'm just saying that anything, should this go forward, that I would suggest that would need to be an exhibit showing.
Yes.
Yes.
The whole property, if you walk out now, that that's what's covered. There shouldn't be anything left out.
I just simply mentioned that the use of a new survey would cost the county several thousand dollars, and I didn't want to go ahead and order it without.
Right. I don't want to waste taxpayer dollars unnecessarily. So after last meeting, I was very skeptical of the proposal. However, after rereading it, digesting it, having lengthy conversation with Jeff Blenkoff, I really believe that your proposal is a lot stronger than the village's just landmarking. So I'd like to thank you and I'd like to thank the county for stepping up and adding all these wonderful protections and checks and balances that changes that has to happen, your board has to approve them, which is good because needs might change, and the community might be asking for something that's different or modified, and that allows things to change as the village, you know, changes. I like all these protections. I think it's a really good job in keeping this property preserved for the future, for future generations. So I wanted to thank you very much for doing all that hard work, doing it, and eventually getting me convinced that this is better than what I think we went to initially. Our plan was to initially landmark this to protect the property, but there were enough holes in that, and I think you filled all the holes to make this a lot better for the village. So we're not going to vote on this tonight. The reason we're not going to vote on this tonight is, and you're trusting, it'd be unfair for AJ to vote on this if he hasn't had an opportunity to read transcripts on last meeting, bring up speed on all this. So we're not going to take any action tonight. But I want to know if any of the other trustees, before I speak to the public, any of the trustees have any questions on this?
I do have a question. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go for it. One of the good things about doing this is that you find places you've never met before. So I've never been to the property board, and when you asked me that, the house is partially residential. Can somebody explain how that is, what's going on with that, if this is confusing to me?
So we are very lucky to have the Art Guild on the right side of the home.
Right.
And they're running beautiful programs there. There's residents on the left.
And the landscape is very beautiful, by the way. I almost spent a long one yesterday, but I think.
The residence is currently under a permit, which has, it's a revocable permit. Mr. and Mrs. Sloan asked to stay for a few more months, and we have kindly agreed while they look for a new home, because the Art Guild is growing, and we love them as a tenant. It's not really a tenant, it's a permit as well, for the T. And they would like to expand, and I think they bring beautiful programs to the community. So I'm looking forward to, the Sloan's evacuating that lots exception of the, probably in three, four months. And we'd like to have this process go smoothly. They asked for an extension. We gave it because they're not young people and they need time to move.
No, it just brings to my mind, if one of the covenants that we're talking about, which is better than landmark status, or has more breadth than landmark status, includes interior stuff. I mean, somebody living there right now, I mean, if they move with their couches around, are they violating the covenant in the deed? Not the couches, you know, big decisions, but what control do we have in terms of what's going on in there now? And can we even accept this new deed until this tenant leaves occupation? Because otherwise, we don't know what they're doing in there. I mean, within reason, or they might have to get a permit if they want to do work inside the house twice.
From what I understand, they pick up their premises in wonderful repair and condition. Most of the fireplaces and the floors and the windows and the doors that we are concerned about keeping as, having historical value on our side or on the Art Guild's side.
Is there actually an inventory of what is historical and what may not be historical?
We have a list that we're just trying to put together now because we'd like to go, going forward, we'd like to have the combination of the management, parks, and DPW work together to make some of the improvements.
And is, who, of those, who is the main caretaker?
We have a company, it's run by Mr. Matt Smith, and he is the management.
No, I'm, on that county side, who's in charge of managing that caretaker?
That's what I'm saying. We have a private company that we contract out. It's the Lindergroves.
Who contracts that company?
Oh, Nassau County has a contract with the Lindergroves.
Okay, I didn't know if there's a specific department within the county that dealt with.
Uh, parks.
Parks, okay.
Parks.
Actually, there's a good thing to come out, and Jeff did mention this. Our landmark, the Flower Hill Landmarking only landmarks exteriors, and this would help protect the interior. Which is another added bonus because I haven't seen the inside of what Mitchell has. There's a lot of historic stuff inside that could then be preserved as well, which is very good.
Yeah.
They have, if I may interrupt, they have about three or four fireplaces that are restored.
Yes, you should stop by somewhere there to report on the board. We have, our office is the original home. It dates back to 1675, and has the original floorboards, ceilings, fireplaces, and things like that. And we have a list of all of those things, and we took Anna and DPW around, pointing out each of the things that we would love to make sure are taken care of and maintained.
So you need to identify yourself for the record.
Sorry, Lisa Groves and the Art Guild.
So, since we're getting quickly, my question for you is, in the Art Guild's perspective, is what the county proposing better than landmarking? Is that something that you think is better?
Yes, we do. We're very happy to see these, these features that are on the inside that date back 350 years to have some kind of protection with it. Because since we're only a tenant, like if something goes wrong, we can't go and repair it ourselves, and we want to make sure that Nassau County is going to send someone in to repair it to maintain its historical integrity.
Okay, good. I want to make sure the Art Guild is on board for this as well, that it's very important that you guys have a say in this whole process here.
So there, in the previous hearing, we, there was a discussion of some committee board, I'm not sure if that was controlling. Is that still part of the setup here, that there's some controlling body?
The Preservation Board, it's still, it's been a little bit renamed. There's like a little bit of a twist to their new name, but they're still around, and they're still going to need to sign off and everything, but I would assume that we're making this a strong argument for them to sign. I don't see why they wouldn't.
But just to, so there are actually, there's sort of two third-party groups that work with this. There's the group called, in the deed, that the county consents for the creation of a committee consisting of three members. That's the committee I think you're referring to, to see that the provisions of the covenants are complied with. And the initial members of the committee were to be the decedents of, actually, the owners. And I believe that there's still.
Mr. Williams is still around. He's not old, and he's still able to sign off on everything.
So that's one aspect of it. But then we have the Society for the Preservation of Long Island Antiquities that also has to agree to any changes. So they would both need to be involved in any changes. So actually, in the end, they would have to agree, but what's being discussed is that Flower Hill would then have a final say.
Right, so whatever they come up with would be brought to the board.
Yes. And I do want to go back to what trustee Smith was just saying, because I think that's a really important point. In the deed, the way it's written, it mentions, and it's kind of interesting because it talks about everything being so permanent, but then it says the property will be used for anything other than separate family residences. And my guess is that that's because that residence was there. And what that suggests to me is if we move forward with this, just to make sure that I need to agree with the time we reached, we are to clarify what kinds of uses are going to be there right now. If it's going to be art field, if the residential is leaving, I think that needs to be nailed down because that's a really good point. They would, under this, they're supposed to come to anybody with any changes to the interior even there, but I take your point, residence is somewhat different in terms of the approach.
And I don't want to pass as a new deed, and then the first thing we're doing is throwing people out of their house.
Right.
But I think we have to take, that has to be accounted for.
Absolutely, and that's why I think it's important, Ms. Burzine, to point out, even before this process started, I think that residents, the residents were on their way to moving out. That had, there was nothing to do with this process here. Sure, please.
I don't know when I'm allowed to speak, so. So in the bequest with the deed, it says that it's the properties to be used for arts and culture. And I know from the documents that we have, which may not be everything, that the resident was put in in the beginning 12 years ago, or 10 years ago now, in order to help pay for the roof. And they said they'd be out in five years, and the Art Guild would take the property as, you know, as the bequest said. But it just didn't happen. Right, they came one year after we came in.
Let's say this will miraculously get approved today. What's the timeline to make everything happen?
The.
To have the two other board or committees meet, to have all of these covenants put in the deed? How long is this going to take? So we have a approximate timeline.
Do you like the comments as they exist right now? Do you think we would need to polish them?
There's just very few changes, one of which was about the issue of residents that I think have lost their express.
I think that would need to create the survey.
Right.
Create the exhibit. And I think filing takes what, about 10 weeks?
Well, but my, my separate question is, I didn't know, you would know better. Does this have to go to the county legislature?
No, it doesn't.
It does not, so. So then, if, if this was to be reserved for decision tonight, and should the board approve it next month, I think that the ballpark could be, to be fair, about three months after that for documents to be prepared, reviewed, approved by both sides, and then filed and recorded.
Okay, that's a lot quicker than I would expect, but it's a better return, so.
Okay, I just have one other question, and it's always, you know, what you can never plan to work. So is, how is something like this, God forbid, but how is there something like this reversible? Or what's the instrument by which you might be able to reverse what can be decided?
Okay, are you talking about the original deed or the restrictions of current?
Uh, what we're talking about now, the adoption of the new deed.
Right, so that would be if both sides, both participants to this deed were to meet and in writing, determined to revoke it. I believe it could be revoked, but that would not affect the prior existing deed.
Right, the current, the current deed would maintain that.
Right, that exists and that already.
And what is on that current deed?
That, on that current deed, it includes the requirements that this can be maintained as apartment in perpetuity, that be maintained and used for historic purposes only, that the county maintain, I believe that's in the deed, that any changes to go to interior and exterior have to go through both committees that we discussed, as well as through the Society for Long Island, Society for Preservation of Long Island Antiquities. The difference here is that what the county is proposing here is to say that they would ask and agree that Flower Hill sort of join into that, and they would also add on to it the further provision that while the initial deed doesn't specify control over use, that Flower Hill through its Board of Trustees would have that power. So the current owners couldn't change the use without approval of the Board of Trustees. And additionally, they couldn't assign it, they couldn't transfer it. The county can't sell or in any way convey the property, or for part of it, which is kind of important because it's a large chunk of property. So the idea is they could sell a little bit, but this would not be permitted under the current proposal.
Wouldn't the state legislature also have to sign off since it's a parkland?
If there's any, if there's going to be any alienation, sale, or change of parking, it's, it always needs to go to the state legislature for approval. But this is an additional control.
Question in the back?
Yeah, my name is Stephen Stone.
Yeah, uh my name is Stephen Slough. I am one of the two residential tenants on Elder Fields.
Okay, I'm sorry. Could you spell your name?
Slough, S.L.O.A.N.
And your address?
Two hundred Polwashi.
Thank you.
My wife and I are one of the two residential tenants in addition to the caretaker in the cottage. Mr. Blinkoff too, correct what you said earlier, we did not have any plans to leave from it. But we were given a notice of eviction from the county on February eighth as a complete surprise. We have lived on the property for fifteen years, taking care of the house, the grounds around our house as if it was our own house. In that time, we have paid the county nearly six hundred thousand dollars of rent. We are, we would never, it was never the assumption that we would leave in five years, as Mr. Grossman said. That is not in the agreement. That was not with the agreement with Smith and Brok. They have the same type of license agreement that we have. But um what I think is that, one of the things I wanted to ask is that as far as any changes on the inside of the property, you mentioned this can't be any changed. What if someone wanted to change, say, the interior of the barn to make it more for use on a commercial basis? Would that be allowed? Where you upgrade lecture HVAC, toilets, et cetera?
It doesn't control electric. I believe it does control HVAC. Um and my apologies, my point when I spoke before was not that whether or not we were choosing to leave. My point was that the discussion of the residence was separate apart from the hearing that came before this.
Yeah, currently.
That that was.
I just wanted to correct that for the record in that this was a total surprise because.
I look, sure, I just wanted to finish the thought. Um the deed, which is posted on the website and I'll review again, you can as well. Then as my understanding, that the electric will be controlled, not HVAC, but everything to take.
No, my point is, the the property now is extremely commercial. It's been over commercialized. It's used as a day camp in the summer. The area has been denuded of grass, of woods, of shrubbery by all the commercial aspects of the Art Guild, all the cars that are parked in there. It's like a Sunday school pickup many days where there's so many cars going back and forth. It's really a disaster of safety. Uh and by allowing, and well, this is not for the county, by allowing the Art Guild to try and take over the other half, there's going to be an additional commercialization of the property, which will be to the detriment of the county. The the street right behind the property, Woodhill, there is, right now, one house is up for sale for four and a half million dollars. That house across from it, colonial assault, that's colonial assault for three and a half million dollars.
So can I ask what has this to do with any relevance on properties that are.
Yeah, because if you let me finish, I will.
I'm gonna I'm gonna hold you to three minutes and you're one minute, one and a half minutes in.
As I mentioned, the over-commercialization of the property and the barn is renovated. And people would have would have to walk through the egress area to Woodhill where they would park their cars. Right now, the Art Guild has used the property from either nine AM, eight AM to eleven PM at night. You'll have people paying fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year in taxes with their cars parked in front of their houses seven days a week up until eleven o'clock at night. People where buying who are living in now three, four, five million dollar homes. And I think that is something the residents' ability to appreciate.
We haven't heard from any of the residents.
Because they don't know that yet. There've already been granted a ten thousand dollar grant from the legislature for uh work on the barn.
Which was returned because we worked on to do work on the barn.
Sure. But in it, if you come by the property now, you will see what has happened to it over the years, the lack of grass, the bushes. Four uh there were four additional parking spaces made. The area was excavated, gravel was put on there. Again, it's become less and less of a preserve the last few years.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else from the board or anyone else from the public with any questions?
I'm just going to add that that's a revocable permit. Revocable for any reason at any time.
Mm-hmm.
And we're just exercising our right.
To use it for arts and recreation as the initial plan for the property was.
Correct.
Jeff, I think I need to make a motion to.
My question would be, if at this point, if there are no other questions, it's concerned, if there would then be a motion to to close the public hearing, but to reserve for decision and deliberation.
Yep, I'll make that motion.
Do I miss?
I think there's a question.
Actually, you have a question?
Yes.
Okay.
Michelle Schwartz, Landmark Commissioner.
Your address?
Fifteen Bridge Drive West. I'm allowed to ask, what is the harm in complying both the covenants and giving this historic building, which is one of the oldest extant structures along Long Island, publicly owned with covenants, in an unbelievable history, landmark status, the landmark status that it deserves? This is specifically what the Landmarks Preservation Chapter of our code is designed to protect. And not to do it will be a sin for this community. And frankly, if that were the case, in the words of Mayor Lawrence Bradley, then I am ashamed of my post.
Thank you for your comments. Have one other comment from the back?
My name is Andrew Cronson, three one eight Trumbull Road. Mine is more of a statement.
I'm sorry that I did not catch your last name.
Cronson, C.R.O.N.S.O.N.
And your address?
Three one eight Trumbull Road. Muncy Park.
Where is that?
Muncy Park.
Okay, thank you.
I'll try and keep my to the three minutes that you were saying. I'm a lifelong Manhasset resident and a current master's student in the Urban Planning Historic Preservation Program at Columbia. I also serve on the Board of Historic Districts Council, New York City's most prominent preservation advocate and and the historian for the Village of Muncy Park. In fact, I believe I was the youngest historian in New York State until Mitchell Schwartz was appointed. My interest in preservation came about after the devastating loss of Inistada, the same nice treehouse, which was almost ten years ago, so the month it closed. And it has made it made it my mission and hopefully my life's legacy to protect what little remains are passed on about it. The property in question, the Elder Fields Preserve, started in sixteen seventy-five and was later altered by Roger H. Blairard to become a country's favorite wireless muncy, a steamship magnet and a founder of St. Francis Hospital. This property is extraordinary property in terms of giving understanding to the development of cattle. It is one of the few locations in this region we can trace a lineage across over three hundred years of change. On the stewardship of the Art Guild, the property has been restored and reused as a successful art center. While the unfortunate realities of Nassau County is the fastest investment in parks and the many historic sites entrusted in the public care. Following the dissolution of Friends and Long Island Heritage in two thousand and three, the county has opted for a model of having friends groups deal with the operations as I see firsthand the ongoing maintenance for these buildings. You can see in the stark difference between filets at the Sandpoint Preserve and the Jerusia Dewey House of the Nassau County Art. One has a private endowment or is obscene and the other is a total ruin to this day with no accountability. In fact, the sign in front of it has speaks of a restoration project which was to commence in nineteen ninety-seven and it never occurred. I was born in nineteen ninety-six. A two thousand and five report by Spalia Preservation of Long Island, which is the aforementioned organization, did a thorough survey of all the properties that Nassau County owns. And they remarked their regretful state of the Elder Fields Preserve in two thousand and five. It showed in photos and described the property as neglected, vacant, water damaged and with discarded sofa nonchalantly rotting in the shrub out front. You can find this website, this this report on their website currently. Luckily, the Art Guild has stepped in and is taking charge to restore dignity to this property. Having a landmark designation will ensure local control to show the county is held accountable and show that they're doing the best job possible. As part of my work for the Historic Districts Council, I'm going to committed hand reviews every landmark proposal for New York City. And I see firsthand on a weekly basis how critical having a commission review individually by hand each proposal is. As is apparent that Historic Preservation of Long Island has taken a backseat in both restoration proactive designation, I do applaud Flower Hill for taking this initiative. I hope that is only the very start of an ongoing effort to recognize and protect the many landmarks, and I believe there are probably fifty or a hundred more in Flower Hill that are worth saving. It was sadly too late for the Hewitt Homestead diagonally across the street from this property and the Chapman Mansion, which was purchased by North Homestead Country Club and allowed to be demolished. Almost that.
Do you have much longer?
I have a few more sentences. Preservation is sustainable net cost in the public interest that boosts property values and creates more jobs in traditional construction. If you look at Roslyn, it was on the brink of demolition and it has been restored thanks to Roger Peggy Garrett. And you can see their legacy today. And I hope that Flower Hill will emulate that and will take preservation seriously and will be a model for governance and preservation. This is your chance to make new history for Flower Hill and give the history that it has the best possible chance of being around for when I get older and children and generations after me are here. So thank you very much for taking the time to do it, for taking the time to do this.
Thank you for your comments. Just for the record, we, the the Landmark Commission didn't be for how many years, Rachel? Last time, more than twenty years ago? Maybe twenty-five years ago?
Last time I met, I think it was nineteen ninety.
Okay, so we did, you know, we do take landmarking seriously. We, I I reconvened the Landmark Commission of point of view members. Um they came with some recommendations, some properties. We'd ready landmark two properties a couple of months ago. So I think Mrs. Gers, Ms. Gersh.
Gershon.
Oh, I'm mistaken. Um according to Anna for now, it's much easier, can attest. If Flower Hill was to landmark this property, I believe all these covenants would come off the table. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's not a choice of landmark and this, it's landmark.
It's a choice, it's landmark.
It's it's not together.
It's not together. So the reason, so initially, I thought, as Michelle said, originally, I thought landmarking is better. But upon reading all these covenants and speaking to our village attorney, this is better for the property than just landmarking it. This is really going to preserve more of the property, more of the interior. It's going to prevent more things from possibly happening to the property than just landmarking. Which is why I was initially feeling the other way, but I I'm now convinced that these covenants are better for for the community to keep this building.
It's the work of, I have a question, Paula. I've never heard of either or in New York City and Roslyn and the other areas on Long Island where Spalia holds covenants. They're also landmarked locally. It's never been in my experience.
So so there's, so there are existing covenants, I'm gonna play your job right here. There are existing covenants on the property. They're not removing those covenants. If we landmark it, those existing covenants can stay. These are additional ones. These are extra ways to preserve the property, which far outstrips just regular landmarking. Correct, Jeff?
I believe they had additional protections. I do just want to clarify two points, which is I don't think this was the suggestion you were intending to make, but I think it can be implicit if we were saying that if the board were not to landmark, that that meant that the board would not be reviewing and making sure that this property was being well taken care of. I think that what this hearing is really about is how the village board wants to best ensure that the property will be preserved, maintained and kept that way into perpetuity. So um as one example, that you mentioned that with landmarking, things would have to go before a commission for review. Um you you may not be aware, that's just a provision in the code, the way this court works. The Landmarks Commission makes recommendations. This board reviews under the way, under the covenants, the way that it had drafted, and I don't vote. This is going to be the board's deliberation. Any proposed change goes to the very board, the board trustees, that would also have to sit and review any change if it were landmarked. So at this point, and I certainly take member Schwartz's comments to heart as well, um what I think the board is struggling with and considering is what's best to make sure that the property is preserved and maintained and kept that way into the future. Um so I think that's where the board was when I suggested that perhaps the matter be closed for public comment with decision reserved, with the exception, if I could just add, of the proposed changes to the covenants and restrictions and the marked up survey, which I think the board would want to see for deliberation.
Thank you. So you want to make the motion for me?
Well, my question is, would there then be a motion being made by the board to close the public hearing with the exception of written documents in form of any proposed changes to the previously submitted covenants and restrictions and a marked up survey showing exactly what is covered by the proposal? And for the board's deliberation to, would the next meeting of the board be sufficient time for that purpose?
That would be sufficient.
So that would be Jim fifth?
Sixth, Jim fifth.
Jim fifth. So if there is a motion to that extent?
I will make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
Also, I can do.
Okay, I'm gonna pull the ward, trustee Smith.
Aye.
Trustee Ludowski.
Aye.
Trustees Orfman.
Aye.
Um trustee Collins.
Aye.
Uh trustee Frankel.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor.
Aye.
Mayor.
You had to think about that.
Yeah, it was like.
Mayor. Okay, unanimously moved.
All right, we'll see you from the Art Guild the next meeting.
Yes, thank you ladies.
Thank you, Mrs. Miss Gersh.
Okay, next. Next on the public hearing calendar.
Yes.
Uh is an application by um De Maria Realde for a special use site plan review for property at ten sixty-three dash ten sixty-seven Northern Boulevard. Um Mrs. De Maria presented a plan converting the existing two store uh building into three commercial residences. You received a packet at your home. You will hold should have a copy of that. Okay, this is De Maria. Cause it was, is that your case? Oh, hi. Can I have your prints?
Yes, my name is Rick Ortlet, ArtTech.
Could you spell your name?
B.A.R.T.L.E.T.T. Offices at one ninety, Mother Parkway in Hop-on. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Um we're here before you tonight, hopefully to advance this project that started as a remodel of the Dunkin' Donuts probably over a year ago. Um we had submitted application to the Building Department for alterations to the building. Um we had received approval of the Architectural Review Committee on those alterations. Um subsequent to that, we were advised that we needed to come before the board here. Um so we're here before you today.
Our village code is very clear about that.
Okay.
It's it's not to be petty or or mean to De Maria family. It's it's just a code.
Right.
It's a record, best piece of.
Um.
Just a no. All right, I'll give you a little time. I don't know if it's not short, but I can tell you if there's any good pizza.
Um the application basically is a downsizing of Dunkin' Donuts. Um the way those facilities operate nowadays, they do not need the real estate that they previously occupied. Um.
They don't get, the guy doesn't get up at four, time to make the donuts.
Not anymore. No, there's there's one guy somewhere else that does that and they ship them and they deliver them. Um so typically, that's, you know, that's delivered twice a day. The only thing they make on site is muffins and croissants. And they also bake those on site, but donuts and other products is delivered, you know, two times a day. Um so as such, this facility, which has been there, I believe, since nineteen fifty-nine, if I just learned tonight that it was actually the first Dunkin' Donuts on Long Island. Um it was their pilot program and they opened that store at that location. It was the busiest Dunkin' in America up until about fifteen years ago.
We're talking landmark, Brad.
Which is a fact.
Oh, crazy. You're like a landmark, then you're right. Can't touch it. Can't touch it for landmark.
So as as a result of that, um the Dunkin' is looking to condense their operations, move it to the one end cap of the shopping center, surrender the portion, that's the current retail space, the sales space for the Dunkin' as another retail tenant opportunity, another retail space for for Mr. De Maria. Um as you know, his pizza place operates and occupies the third space within that shopping center. The. The parking, as, as I see it, meets the requirements of the village code, the Dunkin' Donuts, the proposed Dunkin' Donuts, and again, this is another change that's gone, gone through with a lot of these Dunkins. They're providing less and less onsite seating. Most people are takeout, or they're, you know, on the go, where they order something online with their phone. They run in, pick it up, and they're gone.
I haven't counted. Sorry to interrupt. How many current tenant slash seats are in Dunkin' Donuts?
Not too many. The existing one, I think, is twelve, twelve or sixteen.
Currently, right now, there's two tables.
There's only two tables there.
Oh, okay. I thought there was more.
So technically, this is, this is redone by our P. So technically, is proposals more seating than currently has?
I suppose, yes.
I just.
We're, we're show, we're showing six seats. And at that rate, there's one and a half spaces plus one per employee, which brought, you know, they figure about three employees for the store. Or at the four and a half, or five parking spaces. The pizza place has sixteen seats, which is four spaces plus one per employee, which they have fifty-four. At a given time, it's eight spaces. And the vacant space, which amounts to about eight hundred and twenty-five square feet, would require five spaces plus one per three hundred square foot in excess of two thousand, which would not apply. So, five spaces total for that space. So, the total parking required would be eighteen spaces. Current parking that's installed on the site is twenty spaces, two of which have been occupied by outdoor seating in front of the pizza place during the pandemic. So basically, part of the requirements Mr. Abdinsky had mentioned was he wanted to clean up a few open issues onsite, the largest of which was a retaining wall permit that had never been inspected and closed out. Di Maria has since had a structural engineer out to certify that the retaining wall is in good condition and, you know, complies with any applicable codes. And Peter had also asked that the entire building be refaced as opposed to just the Dunkin' side. We had originally proposed just to kind of renovate what was going to be the Dunkin'. He said, I'd like to see the entire, the entire building be done. So we have since prepared designs for that. You have black and white copies of those elevations. I do have color copies, if you'd like, you can submit those.
So, it's going to be a signage store in the middle?
I'm sorry?
It's going to be a signage store in the middle?
Well, I don't, I don't.
Let me just drop that.
Yeah, yeah.
You almost got an answer.
Is, is there a perspective?
Let's, let's, let's.
I just, I just wanted, for the record, please note that Exhibit One, color renderings of this site have been distributed to the board.
And most important, in the permit application, it said excavation. Is that correct or incorrect?
Excavation?
Yes. It said the kitchen is going to be excavated. Is that correct or is that incorrect?
No, no.
Okay.
The ki, the kitchen's being.
The application specifically says excavation, which I.
Was that the application to this board?
That's the, the building permit application. The handover is the building permit. It says excavation. I think you just used the wrong word.
Let's just remove, demolish. Oh, yeah, it does. This is what you should put in.
You could, you could throw your client on the bus.
Yeah.
I wrote excavation.
What's the, what's the correct word?
Um, renovate.
Okay, good. Because the question came up about excavation, not, did it think there's going to be any excavation?
No, basically, there's two, two components of the existing Dunkin' space. There's the existing retail area, where the sales counter, bakery cases are, all the seating, the restroom, that's on the right sides, looking at it from the front. The left side is space that was previously used as a production kitchen. They did all the baking there, they fried donuts there, which they don't do anymore.
We are, we miss that smell.
I know. Things, things are changing, but that's the space that we're looking to convert into the actual Dunkin' Donuts. Currently, that facade of the building is a solid mason wall. We're going to open that up. We're going to put some storefront in it. And just overall, breathe some new life into the, the building, which has been as it stands for quite some time. So with that, I'd like to ask if you have any questions. I do have Mr. Di Maria here, who is the owner of the property.
I'm going to start with Mr. Abdinsky, if he has a.
Mr. Wallace? Mr. Wallace, do you have an additional set for the record?
I do.
Okay.
So, I went to, I went to, the parking calculation represented is, is correct based on our code with number of seats versus it's a retail, you know, it's up to, up to two thousand square feet, it's only five spaces required. The only thing I, I noticed, and it's sort of, okay, I didn't notice, our parking space requirements are ten foot wide. I don't, I don't know that, you know, I don't have dimensions on these, but I just, some verification that, that it meets, meets our parking requirement, so the parking space size can be ten feet.
Okay.
And must, uh.
Again, I, I basically just shown the parking as it sits.
As it is, okay. So you're showing a total of twenty spaces. Yes.
Uh, yes, I believe that is the. Which includes two accessible spaces.
Two, the two handicap, yeah.
Correct.
Those, those can be sized by the handicap requirements, I think it's, it's eight or nine feet with.
Eight foot.
With eight foot size. But the other, the other regular spaces, just check to see those widths. And yeah, just to clarify, they did go for the architecture review for, for the, for the pizzeria. I think it was when it came before the board, the, the board here had asked to see the entire building of that, which I, I think, I think makes perfect sense. I mean, we're aesthetics, we want to, we want to see the building designed as, as a whole. So, right.
So, I have a question. Just on the side rendering, when we were talking about pickup, is the pickup a drive through?
No, no, walk up.
Oh, so.
Aggressive.
Because now, yeah, because now, you know, when you, when you kind of, you can come in from that, people use it as a cut through, or they, they park, and then you punch it out, and then you're going, can't make a left to go right back. It's, it's, the, the parking is a disaster.
No, that, that's what I think is the elephant in the room right now. The parking, it's not the building, it's the parking lot. It's a disaster.
It's a parking is disaster.
I think the fact that there's so much curb cut versus curb, real curb, is a, is very problematic. I mean, I know it's a difficult site, but I, I can't, I can't in my right mind accept making any improvements to the building without some proposal on the table, improvement in parking. It's just bad. Bad design.
Do you know maybe it means taking the outdoor thing down, or that island, that's a nice, I don't know, but something. It, it just, the parking is a disaster.
But we'll get to the parking in a second. I want, I have a question for Peter. Utilities. Are they going to be, is, is the new retail store going to have its own utilities? Going to be subeded on the existing? How is that going to work?
Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure what Mr. Di Maria's intentions are. There is enough electric to the building now to substantiate two separate services for both the Dunkin' Donuts and the vacate space. So chances are, it would just be a, a matter of setting another meter.
Okay. I'm an architect, so I'm going to ask you some questions that, I mean, most people may not know, but garbage is a problem. The town of North Homestead, as you know, you have to have refrigerated storage for the refrigerant set. How, and we've had some issues in the past with garbage. And we've had complaints from neighbors regarding the issue of garbage piled up next to the building.
In fact, it's been one of the garbage. It's a very severe rat problem.
And well, the rats obviously feed because of it, yeah.
Reno's brother, who, they, they blessed the issue with the, with the dumpsters, and they upgraded it to called a rat proof container. So, they did comply with the requirement from the village and from the Board of Health.
In New York, like the bottom of health.
Right. So, I'm just asking, how, how will that be handled by, let's assume that this expanded food service operation?
Well, hold on, so in order to be food service, they would need to come to the board for a special.
Special use.
Use permit. And I don't believe that this board.
Isn't it for special use?
Oh, that's just the site fund. I, I don't believe that this board would grant another food license on this property.
Can I just have Mr. Reno just enter his appearance, because I, I know you've been commenting. So I just, for the record, please, this is being recorded, your name and address. And you are the owner of the building.
Reno de Maria, ten sixty-seven Northern Boulevard, Roslyn. You live there, Reno?
You live upstairs.
Just on the comment about the use, I mean, since nineteen fifty-nine, when this was here, and everyone, when the pizzeria was there, but now, in business zones, you know, any kind of like takeout space is specifically prohibited. So if it was like a takeout food place, you know, under a prohibited uses, it's now a prohibited use. So I don't, you know, I don't know, it would be a variance if they were doing, but, yeah, I think they would, they would be limited to, to retail in that space.
It would be a variance if they wanted to.
Under the code here.
If they wanted to do something that's, you know. All right, so, you know, that's just one concern of mine that I have, and I think we also now want to get back to parking. By the way, it's, it's very nice. I think it looks very contemporary, colors are great, you know.
So, I, I have a couple, I have a, are you done with Peter? Yep, okay, because I have a, a litany of parking questions, which might answer some of the board's questions. First of all, one, two, three, four, five of the spots are, part of the spots is state property, correct? If you look at the survey, you just make.
On the long side.
On the rest of the time? So, if the state was to, I, I don't know if you have any permits or easements, or whatever, with the state to allow those spots. What would happen if the state came in and took those spots away from the establishments? Then what happens?
Um, I guess.
And do we even know if, if, if Joanne's, I was a bit sarcastic, I was just. Is Joanne legally using that land? Do we, and you don't have an answer now, do you?
No, I, I don't have a, a direct answer for that.
I think we need to know that answer, because if the state, if there's no easement granted, and the property is just being used, then if the state comes in one day and says, get out, where is everyone to park?
I would defer. Do you know?
I, I do not know. I mean, it's been this way since nineteen, since the fifties. Obviously, I could contact the state department, the Department of Transportation, like, is that who I'm contacting? You know state, you know state?
Yeah.
I, I would be curious to know, because again, if the state decides to put a special right in term, you're losing half the spots in this lot, which is going to be a problem. The second issue I have is towards the dumpsters. If you look at the property, there's a little island there. It is impossible for anyone to be able to park in those last two spots, pretty much because of the island that exists there already. So, you're claiming that there's sufficient parking for the lot based on striped spots, but those last two spots by the dumpsters almost never used, because it's impossible to pull it in to pull out. So, that should really be part of the calculation, is the spots, but then that is a good spot.
They're usable, they get used.
I mean, they're not used a long time. Nothing to say that they're not. Again, every time I drive by, it's less than here there. Those spots are very, it's very difficult for me to, for the others to pull out. It's just very. The problem that happens then, Reno, is the people who then can't park there are then parking on Ridge Drive. And that's a whole other issue, because I'm sure half the people here are going to have issues with that, from people who live on Ridge Drive, so we have that problem. Then next, um, what's going to happen with deliveries? So, we're, so Dunkin' now has to have the donuts delivered daily, so that's a large truck that comes, how many times a day? Once, twice?
I don't know, I think once a day.
So.
Actually, I don't even think it's once a day.
So telling you that donuts are just sitting there for days?
They're frozen, frozen.
No, but the, uh, the donut products are delivered with a small truck. It's not.
Okay, so, so, just saying, we have deliveries, you, you get deliveries, and we don't know where the third tenant's going to be, that's deliveries. Do we have sufficient parking or space on this lot?
Loaded, loaded, thank you.
For, for a third, a third tenant, that, that.
We require loaded for commercial space?
I have to load it. Because then when the truck is delivering, now people can't be parking. So it just, it just issues the.
Well, again, we're, we're talking about a site that's been developed with this use for decades.
Honestly, but now we're talking about adding a third tenant, and I don't know if this third tenant. Well, the goal is not to add a third tenant. The goal is to empty out that space and create a two thousand square foot space, the, the pizzeria and that space together. That's my goal. So, does that change this application then? Yeah, I mean, you're, you're applying for a third tenant, but now you're telling us that you want to be that tenant.
No, I don't want to be that, sir. I want to have another tenant take two thousand feet. So, we're going to just have Dunkin' one thousand feet and the two thousand feet, another tenant.
Where are you going to go?
I don't know.
I don't know.
So, so we're talking about potentially just, but the way this plan is presented right now, it's showing three tenants.
As three signs.
And three signs, so.
It might, they're becoming a new application for two spaces, because then the parking changes.
There's a lot less problems if this is a two-tenant site, which it currently is, than the way you presented it as a three-tenant site. A three-tenant site, you've got a lot of problems, I think. A two-tenant site, you already have two tenants, just shuffling the water, so we'll keep on going. You might want to change your application before we finish. The walk-up window, how is this going to affect any parking? Will, will people not be able to park at that one spot in front of the walk-up window? Where, I assume with a walk-up window, it's going to be more traffic. I'm kind of curious where those people are going to be in the park, and.
Are you going to walk? Well, that's, that's an easy fix. I tell Dunkin', he can't do a walk-up window.
Well, it's, it's, it's not that there's any more traffic as a result of a walk-up window.
It's intended primarily.
Actually, it makes it quicker.
You know, anybody who currently comes and has to go into the space to pick up their product, they're still parking. So now, instead of parking and going into the restaurant, they're going to park, they'll walk up to the window, get back in the car, and be on their way.
You don't have the sufficient distance between the walk-up window and the parking. That's like a foot or two.
Yeah, it's right there.
You can't, you can't have it.
There's going to be no walk-up windows.
It has to be at least three or four feet.
So that, that's why I bring it up, because you have walk-up, which might be a great idea. There is, now he's using his first sidewalk.
Yeah, none of those spots are.
There's sidewalk on that whole side of the building.
Well, I'm looking at your drawing. I'm looking at the site plan, and I don't see enough distance between where the walk-up window is going to be and these parking spots. I mean, what is that like? You really need to, you know, it has to be ADA compliant. So, if I'm in a wheelchair and I want to go to that window, I don't think I have the room here to do that. That doesn't look like an accessible panel.
Okay. I mean, I, I would assume it's at least three feet.
And I think if I remember, there's a couple of holes there right now, what are those things? Piles, to protect something.
Bollards.
Bollards.
To bollards, to protect that sidewalk.
Right, so if there's bollards there, how is that going to affect? It's just, it's just something to.
Bollards, because of the cars, people walk right through the bollards.
Right, that's how they do it right now. I just want to make sure that that, that stuff is buttoned up and tied up. Other questions?
I got a question, I got a question.
Hold on, let me finish, and then I'll get back to you. Second, let's say there is a third tenant here, and it's not two tenants, this would just possibly ask, presented. Does the site have enough capacity for a third tenant? Whoever the third tenant is, and we don't know what that tenant's going to be. If it's a third tenant, there's going to be like a surreal, a third dumpster? Maybe we need three tenants.
We can, we can work it with, with.
This family, yeah.
They have like big dumpsters now that compress all you, instead of having three or four dumpsters, right? You have one, they have it in a coat of goo, and it compresses garbage every week.
And that's, well, look, if there's going to be three tenants, we need to have that discussion, and you need to present that, because I assume three tenants, three dumpsters, right now, there's just enough room for two dumpsters.
No, there's three dumpsters there right now.
There's mine, there's Dunkin', there's mine, and there's the one for the cardboard. Well, so you need a fourth, because you still need one for the, you still.
I don't know if you need one for the cardboard or not.
No. I don't know if it's a, a requirement. You, you would have to tell us. I, I saw that cardboard was always there, yeah, two, two businesses. Otherwise, I'd say, we need to address the garbage, because we don't want to have what happened two years ago. We're like spilling over garbage and the rats up and down the block. I get nonstop complaints.
I don't think so.
I don't think, I don't think, trust me.
My place, I don't want that.
And it's all comes stemmed from when Schindler's Dumbbell, the lab, that's what started.
Yes, I'm on laughing.
And unfortunately, Earth got ripped up and all of a sudden it was a disaster.
Right, but the dumpsters did contribute to.
Oh, that's a good point, then that exposes the food source.
Alright, and then my last thing I'm gonna address, we'll get to you in a second. We'll finish with the board and then we'll, uh, public. Would you be unable to add in some sort of screening on the roof area to hide all the equipment on?
I love that, I, I, that's actually, I think it's, it's on, isn't it on the, on the side of Ridge Drive sign, is it facing?
I have, and it's a problem with the elevation that we just noticed, and I'll let my colleague here discuss that. Reno, I can't tell from this.
No, no, okay, the other speaker.
That, I can't tell from this and that would be, but I require, I require.
I'm pretty sure it's there, good, I'm gonna be looking for some screening lens.
Good. Uh, he's put up a lower tier, whatever walls that we don't see of the hardware.
Yes.
You referring to the, the east side that faces Ridge Drive?
Yes, yes.
So, uh.
Well, well, we're gonna talk.
I'm sorry.
Talking to the rest. The east side, I know that's the same, I, I wanna put a fence up there, block that in.
Okay.
It's like a, like, with, instead of, on the front of the building, it's a carpet. So that whole east side is open, so.
Nobody wants to see the air conditioner and roof and all that stuff.
We do, it's wonderful work, let's just unify whatever.
Um, I am done with my Spanish position.
So I reviewed the plan during the week and I just see the new one that you gave the fellow copy. The storefront looks flush all the way across, is it not recessed anymore?
I think it may most of render a longer, it's missing from the.
There's a, that was my impression.
There's no.
It wasn't gray.
The footprint doesn't change.
It's very faint.
No, the footprint's right.
Those are, the kitchen is.
It's on the shadow.
It was still set back.
Still ancient, yeah.
You just need to make that a little darker, that gray.
I can answer the question about the loading in our, in our code.
Please.
Uh, our code says off street loading and unloading shall be provided for by adequate space in any case where such activity is necessary as part of any use. Goes on to, you know, more specifically, certainly if it's over fifteen thousand square feet, but if it's necessary for any part of the use, which it is here.
Okay. Um, Mary Jeffries, any questions?
I'm asking no questions. Your question. Hey, do you have any question?
Gary, Frank, as you guys.
Yeah.
So, maybe, is that what you're open to public?
Do you guys? This rendering is elevation, something wrong. This sign would not be there, this sign would be back here. Because the building goes like this, so if that Duncan sign is on this corner, you see on that? Here, the Duncan sign is on this corner.
Yes.
Correct.
Then this rendering is wrong.
This is a, this is a different sign, right? It's not orange, it should be orange, it should be, this should be the signage sign, the signage sign. That's better.
This would, this one.
Oh. But it's a wrapped, wrapped in order.
Wrapped in order.
Right.
Okay, this could, I mean, this one, this would break it.
Uh huh.
Also, this is the driveway. It's a new walk.
Oh.
This is the, the track of water. That looks too high.
You want to stop there after public.
Uh, it's just, it looks a little low.
Yeah, that has to be ADA height for a walk-up window.
What is, Gary, what's, Gary, what's the ADA height for walk-up window on that section?
Thirty inches?
Thirty-two.
Thirty, thirty-two.
Between, yeah, between thirty and thirty-four.
Yeah, it's definitely less than thirty-six.
Yeah.
And you, you need the building just underneath it.
Right, you need, right, you need a knee space.
Knee space, yeah.
Oh.
You have that knee space, and you have to be able to turn around, you need a five-foot, you need a five-foot curb, you need a five-foot.
I think you just, I think this ruins the window.
I mean, what's the difference if you get out of your car to.
They didn't tell us.
Well, it's quicker than now.
Well, I think it was also in haste, there was another pandemic situation where people weren't going inside.
Good thing about, and, and for the record, I appreciate. It's not like a coffee saver, but the good thing about, we're not getting, yes, we're taking that responsibility. I can say, yes, sir, with certain things, right, there.
Sir, sir, we got, we got a header, we got it. Probably, everybody wants to be able to share everything you say.
Okay.
You know, some, so some of our voting is doing transcripts. So we all gotta talk one at a time so that the, the person doing the transcript can act it, okay, so we're talking over each other. So, any other questions from board? Before I welcome up to the public, I will ask the public if they have any questions to raise their hand. And then, uh, name and address, and we speak, and I'll start with my friend in the front.
Yes, my name is Frank Bright.
Did you spell your name?
B R I G H T, uh, for Ridge Drive West.
Thank you.
And I, I think the board explained the situation with parking and garbage. I don't need to repeat that, I think you're gonna work it out, I'm glad that you're trying to renovate the place. Uh, the main comment that I wanted to make besides the garbage parking situation is that that rooftop is exposed with, uh, chimney's equipment, maybe even close to a dozen of them. It's quite hot. And not only, I directly look over that, but all across Ridge Drive East. You walk up the hill, you can see it from like half a mile, how it's coming in. So I'm glad that you're open, that you suggested this, you're, you're, you're suggested for a screening on top of the flat roof. Happy to hear that and encourage the board and yourself to do that. Uh, based on my visual calculations, you need the screening about eight to eleven feet because some of those equipment are quite tall and as you walk from Ridge Drive East, Ridge Drive East is on the hill coming down. So if you, if you like go three houses down, up, this side east, you see, yeah, you need at least, I, I propose eleven foot.
So we, we will leave that up to the architect and we'll leave it up to our building superintendent.
Okay, well, I'm just.
Unless you're an architect or you have some building experience.
I did study architecture for a couple of years, but not an architect, but I.
So, so we just do our best, do their best, there's gonna be, there might be a limit on how high they can do it.
Right, right, what I'm saying is that, uh, consider the fact that you're coming up from, uh, uh, Ridge Drive East, up and down, and that's elevated, so if you're if you have, uh, six-foot equipment there to work, completely screen that, you probably need an eight to eleven to do that. And this is the tools, one flat roof on the bottom and then the flat roof on the top.
It's a mess.
You have chimneys sticking out on the second floor also. And you should, uh, I think the screening on that, since it's higher elevation, can be less. And, uh, I guess the architect, the building department will, will access that, but I estimate based on me, if you need eleven foot there, you probably need three or four.
Alright, so instead of us deciding, that's what he has not.
Okay, okay, so the other thing is the back also, the back side is also needs the same screening because
Yes.
in, in the width there, when there's no trees, you see the chimneys from the back, on the north side of your property. So you need it all around, you do have proper screening in the front, you have not to expose the roof from the front and you even have proper, uh, uh, screening.
On the west.
On the west, where the mechanical shop is, but on the residential side, where the, that, uh, facing the residential, uh.
So we, we'll have plenty of, I don't think we need to talk about each individual side.
Okay.
It sounds like there's a commitment to screening.
Well, there is, so.
There is concern with putting these screens up, that you create areas for snowdrift and change of structural loading on you, just so. Will work, you'll, you'll be, you're a professional, you'll tell us what can and can't be done and, and we'll, we'll.
I just wanted to make you aware, like, you know, putting an eleven-foot fence, you know, it's gonna.
I'm not asking for an eleven-foot fence, I'm asking, I'm asking for some screening.
Yep.
To improve the visibility and I wanna do everything possible that that building does not collapse. So if you're telling me that things are danger, we, we will do everything that minimizes it in danger to help wealth.
Oh, understood, I just wanted to.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna put a dome over.
Right, right, I mean, if I make a comment here, it doesn't have to be like, uh, necessarily a wall, it could be like.
So, so we're gonna have.
Pizza window where you have.
Let's not get into weeds, it's gonna, we, we requested this screening.
Right.
The architect will come back with a plan, then you can address that plan.
The important thing that can do is grow flower. Besides the pizza is good, wanna improve that, make it more appetizing for people to come in. I wanna come down there, I look at the rooftop, I lose my appetite already.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Yeah, Hong Chang, six Ridge Drive West.
I'm sorry.
H O N C H U N G.
Thank you.
Progress, thank, thank you again, Mayor and our trustees in the service for our community. Um, concerning about this, uh, project, I, before I came here, I spoke to some of my neighbors. Uh, we, we have concern and actually some of the concerns were whether trustees are aware, I could tell, and also address. Um, the rats issue, uh, still going on, uh, I, my opinion, not only my opinion, I have some of my neighbors and a lot of my neighbors here too. Uh, I think that, I understand that, uh, the dumpster or whatever that is has been taken care of. But issues remain, uh, that's, that's our observation. Uh, second observation is that, uh, as, as some of the trustees mentioned, the traffic is very bad for them, as you're all aware. Uh, so that, that's another concern and I'm, actually, I'm very happy and glad that, uh, not a serious accident that happened there so far. Uh, but I'm very concerned about it because I see my house is right there and I see that there's a lot of traffic there. Third is the parking issue, parking issue been brought to your attention on a whole of occasions last year too. Uh, that issue still remain unresolved. Um, so yeah, these, my neighbors are very unhappy about the situation still. And what we are very concerned about is that once this renovation is done or this project's done is that a lot more traffic will take place in the premises or outside of premises. That, um, overflowing traffic will be an issue for, for our neighbors. And even, you, you all know that, that space has a very limited parking spaces. So if there are more people and more people, depends on what kind of new business comes in. If their customers or guests stay there for a long time and, and, and there is a, and there are no parking spaces, they will park in the neighborhood. Alright, so that will be, that is another concern that we have, so I just like to bring this, uh, to, to your attention after I skip to, uh, some of my neighbors.
So can I just address one quick question?
Sure.
You can sit down. Rats?
Yes.
Still, there's still rat issues because, well, I will ask my number one rat witness, Marcel Benjamin, sitting at the back. Marcel, there's still rats? Cuz you, you're very vocal anytime that there are rats in the pest, you only just mentioned to me a rat and.
I, I can't speak for the entire, um.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, if I jump in, I need your ticket to here.
Well, I'm sorry. My mistake.
Marcel Benjamin.
Marcel Benjamin, eleven Ridge Drive West.
Just for your property.
I can only, I can only speak for my.
Haven't seen rats in a long time.
Uh, on my, on my property, I, I have not seen rats in a long time, but I cannot speak for my neighbors or the entire village and.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna go down, I'm gonna go down a lane, Mitchell Schwartz, who you reside at?
Fifteen Ridge Drive West.
Any rats?
Negative, Mr. Reno.
Cuz your dad would call the league, like, um, alright, and I'm very, and I'm very, if there was a rat issue, and there was, no one has spoken to the village in well over a year about rats, it might be a year and a half. So if there's a rat problem, it would be nice if everyone who's affected let us know.
Sure.
You call the Board of Health, we call the Board of Health, or we've done that, we have, or it's the Board of Health. And we get people out there to see what's going on, but no one has told us anything about rats in well over a year. So I, I was under the assumption that the rat issue was, was gone.
Some of our neighbors would, would say.
Hi, um, my name is Kai Wong from the five Ridge Drive West, I know over there. Um, not as much, but there are still rats, this was like dead rats on my property.
When was that?
Um, this was a little, a little while ago, but.
Let me, how long ago was that?
A little, um, I would say.
Three days ago or six months ago.
Like, um, a month or two ago. So I'm not saying it's omnipotent, but there, it's, it's.
No, no, I, I, if, if there is a rat issue, we can address it, it, it just would be nice if people, instead of a usual board meeting.
Yes. There was. Yep.
It, it lets us know then and there, I assume, cuz I haven't heard anything from anybody well over a year, that there's no rat problem. If there is, we're gonna have the village administration reach out to health department, we'll have somebody come out soon and they'll come and assess the issue. So I'm very concerned about the rat problem and if it is, I, I don't wanna say where it's emanating from, it might be emanating from somewhere else, I'm not gonna point any fingers. Um, we'll have that addressed, but I'd like for the community to tell us when there's a problem, it's, you can't wait for someone to come for building application and you might have had a problem for the last year and not, and not let us know. What, are there anything else?
Um, I think the, you know, you've addressed a lot of the concerns we had in terms of parking and traffic as well, as we've mentioned. Parking, we, it's definitely cleared up a lot, uh, after we guys opened up, um, Millenium Road. I still have people parking right spin in front of my house, so I can't really access it with my three little ones, two, four and six-year-olds. With a few of them, I've caught, you know, smoking marijuana from the car with the windows open as well. And that's not really what I wanna walk home and say. So those are concerns that I still do have, especially with traffic overflowing still at the current state. Obviously, it's not flowing as far down to eleven, thirteen, fifteen, but me, us being second house downs, you know, we're still seeing that quite, quite often in Fergan.
Let's talk, and I, I have an idea of something I've offered to your neighbor, I'd like to talk to you about, so you can reach out to me at the scene.
Sure, thank you.
It's Mayor Village Flower Hill, I will. Um, Marcel, I'm sure you had more to say, so I'm sorry to interrupt in your.
Yeah, so, um, based on the health department's website, you can see that Joanne's pizza had no less than five critical food violations in twenty twenty-two in addition to its twenty-nine non-critical violations. And twenty twenty-one other health department violations concerned the rat infestation caused by this property and Mr. De Maria's negligence and inclination to jointly ignore village and county rules and regulations. The Flower Hill Village Code Inspector was called numerous times, as the owner could not be accountable to manage the condition of the dumpsters um, during this period, so to put it plainly, Mr. Joe De Maria has demonstrated that he is not a good neighbor to the residents of Flower Hill. And so I asked the board, as well as Mr. De Maria, what assurances can be provided to the community that violations of codes and regulations will not continue as he undertakes this project or future iterations of the plan, given that it seems to be the cause.
I'm not a good neighbor, you don't wanna answer, that's fine.
I can't answer, I.
That, that's acceptable. Alright, thank you for the comments, we'll, we'll definitely, we're not approving or disapproving anything tonight. I think there's lots of questions that still need to be answered, so we'll use, we'll take those comments to heart and we'll use that as we decide what we wanna do. But like anything, if there is gonna be any new construction, we're going to uphold all village codes as best we can to everything that goes on at this property. That's why we're talking about having, make sure that the garbage dumpsters are sufficient for whatever you tend, et cetera, et cetera. We, we don't wanna have a repeat of what we had almost two years ago.
Here's, here's one thing that I'll, that I'll say, no matter what I say, it's gonna sound like I'm being defensive or argumentative. The dumpsters, rats truff through plastic.
Uh huh.
Rats are everywhere. The dumpsters have hard plastic tops. So, you, you, that, how, how can I, as one business, be expected to change an entire garbage disposal industry? The dumpsters have hard plastic tops, that's what's there.
What?
And we've, we addressed it, we made them bring us newer dumpsters.
And, and that did help, and, and I would say that if you start to see.
But that's the best I can do.
But if you start to see that these lids are being chewed up, but you need to have a carny company replace the dumpsters or replace the lids.
So.
Because Reno, you're lucky that this establishment is grandfathered in before newer codes. Peter, don't our newer restaurants have requirements for refrigerated garbage and.
Well, town, or town set, yeah, we have different jurisdictions.
Town. Yeah, so, so, everything that your, a lot of things that your restaurant and Duncan has been doing, if it was a newer restaurant, it would be totally.
Well, I'd agree with those regulations.
So I think we wouldn't have those problems. So I think we wouldn't have those problems. We upheld the businesses to the newer code, I believe.
Well, it wouldn't apply to the Village of Flower Hill because the North Hempstead building code doesn't apply.
But but when we had the newer restaurants put in the village, didn't, I don't remember.
Yes, but we had the meat house, which is where the nail salon is now.
Right.
They did have a gar- a refrigerated garbage room.
So what's it.
Required them.
Yeah, sorry, I'm.
But it was something, it was something that was proposed by the board.
It was my client, it was our client, they did it, they did it because they wanted to do it, they didn't wanna promise it. But yeah, but I'm still, I'll leave this requirement in our code, it's not.
So but it's something we could require.
The board can impose whatever, you know, whatever you wanted and whatever conditions were appropriate.
We we don't have any garbage issues with and rat issues that I'm aware of, because we would have heard it about it from Ronnie or from Di. But I know the people who live right behind it, they can call me tomorrow if there's a rat problem. They don't have a rat issue back there. So different businesses are handling it differently and they don't have the same problems that we're currently having.
As as you know, I did act on it.
You did, you did act on it.
But you guys said that we didn't act on it.
Yeah, you guys did a great job.
We did act on it.
We we stepped up.
And I do tell them, I want you here every day if you have to be here, the extermination company.
Right.
And we acted on it and took care of it, so that's.
So if there is a current, we're gonna call the Department of Health. They're gonna come out, they're gonna see where this the rat rat problem is, I don't know, infestation. And we'll we'll take it from there and hopefully we'll have some sort of answer from them before the next board meeting. One more comment, Mr. Benjamin?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that oftentimes the lid is ajar because the dumpsters are overflowing. That's why I've called the village myself and spoken to Ronnie personally. Um, when I find that the that the dumpsters are over capacity, overflowing and therefore the lid cannot close and therefore allows for the rats to just.
When was the last time that happened though?
Obviously.
Okay, so.
But 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 that is also part of the issue.
In the past. Yes.
And when I spoke to the Department of Health, they didn't know if the exterminator had serviced the property because there's no records available for the Department of Health to, the office of food protection to to check with. So there was, you know, a number of issues, a lot of negligence, and this was a big problem. And it cost a lot of money to the residents for having to buy their own exterminators and all this stuff. And a lot of heartache and inability to use our backyards in the summer. Um, so, you know, all I'm asking is for some sort of assurances as we proceed for new projects and new, you know, offering for for this property to continue to to develop.
If if we were to permit this change of use, we would add any and all protections to ensure that the garbage situation is kept under control.
Just so you know that every day that I come, I come to work, I do check the dumpster. And we have the code enforcer also checking on a daily basis, and I've never taken off.
We we, you know, I'll I'll add, you know, you want assurances. I mean, I can't give any assurance, I can assure you that we'll try our best and that we'll adhere to all the codes and that we'll act on any problems when they happen, as we have. We've been here thirty one years. This happened two years ago for the first time ever.
Right.
And ha- it got taken care of within weeks.
You you took care of it, unfortunately, as the health inspector told us. You can hide all the food from the rats, but they're not gonna move away for however many months.
Correct.
And it took that time for the rats to decide to go where they want to.
And anyone who doesn't know this, you can put a steel cap on a dumpster. Rats have no bones, they're made of cartilage. They can go through a hole the size of a nickel. A nickel, a rat can go under a door the size of a nickel. So, you know, I I can assure you that rats are.
You don't want to speak further.
Right.
We will hold you to a high standard in order to keep peace and harmony through the community. Are there any other questions on this? Otherwise, I will make a motion to adjourn this to the June fifteenth. Trustee meeting, you have a second?
Any comments?
I think this gentleman has a.
Oh, I'm sorry, you had another, you had another comment?
Yeah, I have one one comment. I looked at the plan, particularly the east side and the north side elevations from what you put on the website. I do not see any screenings in there right now.
Well, it could, that's because that came up at tonight's meeting and you.
Oh, the the screenings came up, so it's.
So so you saw me hallway, you asked me for screening.
Right.
I asked them for screening.
Okay.
I don't know how we go back in time for screening on the website when we just spoke about it.
Oh, oh, okay, so you just put it in now, okay, sorry.
You know, I didn't know about the screening till you grabbed me before the board meeting.
Okay, alright.
So I only, they, to the out of town.
Okay, I was confused.
Just that. Yeah, no, I I can't be a mind reader, know that you were gonna ask me this question in advance. It would be great if I could, but you just asked me for the screening before we started, so the first thing I brought up.
Okay.
Alright, I made a motion.
Is there any question for the seven and five, you're both experiencing rat problems?
Six.
Six.
Six and five.
Six and five, okay, I'll I'll speak to the board about tomorrow.
Alright, there's a motion to.
Motion to adjourn to June fifth.
Second.
Second, I, Debbie, Janice?
Alright, alright, alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, you know? Sounds weird. Alright, let us go to the, oh, let's open up the regular part of the meetings.
Have a motion to close public hearing.
Oh, sorry, motion to close public hearing, thank you.
Second by.
Okay, all favor.
Alright.
I have a building.
Yes, let's go to the regular meeting, let's open up to public, public.
Regular meeting, okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
No, public comment.
Any more public comments?
Is there any other public comments, anything to do?
On any other issue?
We have a lot.
Mr. Benjamin?
Mr. Benjamin?
Yeah, I wanted to ask about enforcement of the rule on Middle Neck Road to not allow any trucks and what can be done to enhance enforcement.
Well, I want to tell you that I tell every officer I see.
Every day.
Every day, because this is one of my pet thieves. And, you know, they just have to sit there between eight and nine. And they'll they'll find my trucks, but they just don't seem to wanna enforce it.
We we will continue to ask.
Could put across by those things for that.
Yeah, you have a chair, is that down?
We will continue to.
Better yet, better yet.
Do what's on the.
I'm sorry.
The bridge.
We will continue to ask the sixth precinct for support. Luckily, the officers are here every day, we'll continue to ask them, so thank you for the reminder and we'll see. They're there, they they do pull cars over for going through the stop sign at at the freeway gate. We can ask them to pay a little more attention to the trucks instead of the the safety of our pedestrians.
No, I don't want to do that, I just want them to enforce that rule, the signage is.
There's there's only so much that they can, we're not gonna, we're not gonna put someone on that corner every day ticketing trucks. I don't think we can, it's BTL, can we?
No.
Now, we have, we have, uh, we have an act that is part of the village code.
And we'll ask the police to do it. I it's not the highest of their priorities, but we'll continue to ask them to at least try to give a couple of tickets. That might slow some people down. Any other public comments? No?
Thank you so much.
Alright, go for it, Ronnie.
Okay, Mo, can I have a motion to approve the April third minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Do I hear a second? First, please, trustee Dorton, all favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I just wanna abstain on that, please.
Thank you. Okay, next is treasure support. Uh, anybody give me questions about the claims?
I have a question. What kind of grass trimmer and lawnmower did we rent for fifteen thousand seven hundred? Oh, it's a law. Oh, it says rental, it says rental, so.
That was the air raid.
Gotcha. I was gonna say, like, wow, I'm going into renting of a lawnmower business.
Capital Reserve plant was, one of the items was to replace our mowers. The mower just came last week, it's really nice. It's a little wider than our previous mower, so it'll allow the guys to be able to work with it. And it's it's, and it's 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 nice, it's got.
Does that flashing lights on it?
No, it's not going on the roads. It's it's got the roll bar on top, so it makes it a much safer height, so it's it's a really good thing. Now I have a question.
I know you have a question.
I would absolutely yell them all the time, put the thing.
Any other, any any other, any other questions on the?
Claims.
Claims, thank you.
Okay, seeing there are not other questions, can I have a motion for approval, please?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
I have the same normal extension.
And of course. And next we have the building superintendent's report on the architect review committee meeting.
Okay, uh, this was the April twenty fourth meeting. Uh, we had three items. One was returning from one oh two Boulder. It was a request for some change in materials on that, that was approved as submitted. From the zoning board, it's sort of preliminary, because they're in the middle of zoning board. But the architect has to come in as preliminary feedback. We had a lot of feedback for them. They actually, the plan they had had to be reduced as per the zoning board, but we gave them on some of the detailing and comments there. So they they do definitely have to return. Uh, and then we had a new dwelling, one twenty five Walnut. Just a minor comment on some of the stonework return and asking for your approval on that application.
Yeah, shout out to my neighbor who keeps asking me about that dumpster that's been in the driveway for a year. At the house on the corner of Woodland and Fertile. It's one of those new modern houses, you know, it's been a dumpster since.
Yeah.
It's been over a year.
Yeah.
I'll check it out.
It's in the driveway, I mean, they did do some construction recently.
Oh, talking of like three day, one of the.
Yeah, yeah.
That is less than a year, it seems like it's been a year, it's not a year.
They did, yeah, it was a little interior bathroom, but we did a lot of stuff.
I never see any construction. I see more garbage than the dumpster of the time, so it must be, I never see them take it away, but as I drive by, I've seen the levels change.
It's still an active room, I think it's, it's still in force. It's been there all the time. Yeah, yeah.
I was telling.
Okay, um, are there any, any questions or comments on the findings of the architect review committee? If not, can I have a motion to approve their findings?
I'll make a motion.
Trustee Frankel, second.
I'll second.
Trustee Janice, and of course, trustee Ludeski, you are abstaining.
Staying.
Okay, all favor.
Aye.
May I? Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, next.
You always. No, 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 I, you are, you are, thank you very much, thank you.
Uh, plus, our village engineer is not here, but I do wanna report that the bid packets for our twenty twenty three roadwork package, a roadwork contract have been dropped off at the office, we've started to distribute them. So our, we've had three contractors check up bids. Um, we're expecting a very good response. I also spoke to the perk of Plankville Manor about feedbacking on the town of North Hempstead paving contract with Basilico. What we'll do is compare the, um, the unit prices to, that we received from our bidders to Basilico and then make a decision which way to go.
Right, because Port Washington North and Plankville Heights did it successfully.
Baxter State and Fort One did it successfully.
Last year, Monty Park also was, they were, something over.
They did.
No, I know, it had to be.
I know Plankville Manor is playing on that, that's why she has the contract.
Because Penmasco is helping out. So they've been successful with it, so let's hopefully, and and that's the impetus for us to do as well. You know, our neighboring villages have done well in backing on the contracts.
I did tell our engineer that it was important that we, you know, see where we can really find the most value for our money.
Right. We might get more roadwork done this year at the same price or be able to save some money, so.
Rich, do you have anything to report, is the superintendent?
Just, we've just got all the street signs, I think last month we talked about it, I ordered about seventy nine street signs that had to be replaced. Everything has to be mapped by code, we have to have high frequency for the next street signs. So we're definitely changing all those, kind of doing next week, we'll start switching all the street signs. And after that, we'll go to the other sign, like the stop signs, runways, anything like that that needs to get changed, we'll start with that. The next, we'll, 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 yes. That's it, and we got a bit more.
It's arms.
And the replacement, the utility cart is on order.
Yeah.
Hope it comes in June, but I just don't know.
Okay, I'm on it for it. First, I wanna let you know that I heard from St. Francis today and they're, um, they're doing a traffic study, so in the next two weeks or so, you should see those like cables across the the street. So just now it's for a traffic study that they have instituted as nothing to do with us or the state.
Yeah.
We have no idea.
I I bet you I know who's doing it.
How about me? We can't find out, or like, I just feel like there's so much chit chatter about.
You know what, I find it better for me not to ask questions because I don't wanna hear something that maybe I shouldn't know.
So how about you do that anyway and reach out to them? Because you you've already, you opened up the can of worms, right?
Well, they, I just wanna, cause you know, people always call, what's that wire?
Yeah, yeah, no.
So this is what I'm gonna ask, but I mean, the minute somebody sees that, right, we're gonna have, people are gonna have questions, which they have very right to ask, but.
Well, I just want you to recall though, I, you know, this board was intact when we started working with DOT to get the whole Port Washington, Middle Neck Road intersection reconfigured.
I remember that, the traffic circle.
The traffic, so.
Maybe that's what they're doing.
No, this is a option, not the state. I know they have been talking for a long time about reconfiguring their entrance.
So instead of us guessing, what, whoever just told you about the wires, why don't you check that and give us a call?
Can I ask, can I ask one, just for curiosity?
Frank the answer.
So how, I, I, so you do it, I'll I'll do it.
I will ask. I will ask.
I have another channel, possibly. Let's go back to the channel that.
Uh, I will ask. Okay, next, software update. Tomorrow, we go live on our building program, yay. We will have a trainer here with us for two days and it's about time, it's exciting. Uh, in the meantime, our financial program is in the works. Uh, the new company administ has been, they're still in the process of downloading our old or files, the data. And, um.
They're saying we're gonna go live and not pull this.
Yeah, we we still drew and it took, we wanted to wait till the tech season was closed before going live on that.
Makes sense.
We're still working on integrating our scanning with our laser feature software. I have been, I have uploaded a lot of the death certificates myself, I've done that. We're working on getting the building files merged and, um, I think that's all, oh, and then we we bought tablets for the code enforcer and Peter. He's out in the field that will sync with the new program. However, they were the wrong size tablets, so we're exchanging them.
That's on me. I, they did not tell me the right size, I picked along those.
Alright, so we, um, our village, as well as like every other village in Nassau County, receives a seventeen thousand dollar check. As a result, we placed actions sued against Monsanto that was worked by the city of Long Beach. It seems that they had dumped some PCVs into the, into the water, so that was a nice surprise. The other, the other thing that happened is that, uh, we are in a workers' compensation safety group with a bunch of other municipalities, special districts and schools. And this is a group that has a very good rating because we file very few workers' complaints. As a result, we get a dividend and, um, how much was the dividend?
About eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, eight thousand dollars. So, um, I wanna thank Richard and the guys for being so careful.
So we basically had twenty five thousand dollars as a, like, just, I don't know.
Well, no, it, well, the the workers' complaint, because of our lawsuit with accident, our insurance, our insurance costs are going way up. But because of this workers' comp give back, we're we're kind of balanced as to where we're.
We're just giving you a frank that give back for what's comp happens every year. The dollar amount moves up and down because of the pool.
But we do get something back every year.
Yeah, one year we get twelve thousand.
So I'll rephrase it, we got seventeen thousand dollars.
Money is good.
That pays for money.
There you go.
There you go.
Uh, and that's line four.
Excellent. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
With respect to board of zoning appeals, there were four new applications that were heard. Three of them were continued for additional information to be provided. One that closed and went to decision was a return. It's an application about like ten each tree lane and it was modified from original. The app was proposing to construct a roofed over patio and outdoor kitchen that would exceed, originally, they were requesting to have lock coverage of thirty-three point one two percent. The maximum allowed is thirty percent. It was adjourned for a month and they redid their application to remove a portion of the requested covered patio essentially, and they reduced the request to thirty-one point six one percent. When the board reviewed it in the last hearing, they appreciated the steps that the app had took to mitigate any encouragement and noted that it really would fit with the concept that it would have no detriment to the surrounding area and the benefit to the avenue without wanting any detriment, so it was approved.
Excellent.
Mr. Isaac, what's that? That was Mr. Isaac.
I have a couple of quick items. One, Governor Hockel's housing compact plan seemed to be scrapped, which is great news, so thank you to the residents and all of our local elected officials who spoke out against the awful plan by the governor who wanted to remove our ability to control our own zoning within our village. So I suspect the governor will bring this up again next year and we will fight it once again because this is very dangerous for our buildings. Garbage pickup. So I've received a couple of questions from some residents and I will send this out via the mayor's newsletter. Our contract with the carding company does require them to pick up the garbage at the rear or side of the house. They will do that. It's their requirement. Some people have started bringing the garbage to the street. Remind residents, they don't have to do that. Most importantly, though, if there's bulk garbage, like landscaping, debris and other large items, that has to be brought to the curb because it's just not feasible for the carding company workers to go in the back of the house and keep on bringing out bags and bags and bags of landscaping materials, et cetera. And lastly, well, second to last, boxes, please break them down. It's easier for the crews to get that in the truck. And lastly, anybody has any issues, please reach out to the village administrator, preferably via email, so we can have record of any issues. This way, when we're dealing with the garbage company, we can give them day dates and times, and if we're having any contractual problems and we need to modify our contracts, we have enough backup to do so. Thank you to Women's Club of Flower Hill. They had a very successful Easter egg hunt early April. Cowenack Coninsel Historical Society is doing their annual spring fling this Saturday. And another thing, we've had a couple of residents have reached out. As a reminder to everybody, you're not allowed to park cars overnight in the streets between two AM and six AM. The police will ticket. I can't say that they'll get the cop tickets every single day, but they will. So as a reminder to the residents, if you don't wanna get a, so fifty or hundred dollar fine, do you remember?
Fifty.
Okay.
Yeah, I remember that.
If we don't have a fifty, oh, maybe we'll raise it, Gary. Fifty dollar fine. Try not to need your car in the street overnight. We'd ask the police to do a little more enforcement of that.
Right, but residents should know, because I know there was an issue just this past week or two. And it's happened to me. There was a car parked up from our house one night. My neighbor told me about it. He texted me. He says, it's strange car parked in front of our house. I called the precinct. They gave the car a ticket. Can't have a car there again. So I don't know why there was so much back and forth. Just call the precinct. The car's on patrol in the village. It'll come by.
We've had a lot of people like to call me and explain that I'm not working overnight when the car is there.
Yeah, so Frank, I didn't know if you knew that, but how did deputy mayor?
Get a ticket for two AM and six AM. That's a good call.
And lastly, I got a very nice request from our, one of our village historians, Richard Schwartz, and I'm heading this into the newsletter. If you have any old photos of Flower Hill, you can scan them or share them with us. This way, we can start building up our existing database with even more and more historical information for the future.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for finally remembering, because we spoke about this like a year ago.
I know, I think that.
You're not, it's okay. We'll, we'll not end, but we didn't have one year's worth of photos.
It's a big effort.
Yes. Any trustees have any things to report? Excellent. Send it back to Ronnie.
Okay, all business. So we received three responses to our planning, our, the. One came in very, very high and that was, yeah, Nelson Pope.
H two M.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, H two M. So we've got Cameron Engineering and H two M. We're pretty close to each other. I know trustee Ludauski suggested that we interview them.
But also, I think that they all presented slightly different takes on how to do the work and how much effort it would take, which is explains why H two M is, has a bigger fee than the other two candidates. So I think we need to bottom out what is the right, the right scope of work, to be sure that we're putting the right value. Because H two M has about three times as many meetings, public meetings and other types of meetings, than it looks like the other candidates have. So I think that would come out in some of the interview process, but I think probably the first thing I would do is try to figure out how do we compare the scopes and what's kind of looking at the right scope for us.
So I would say the person who asks the question then gets to be in charge of that committee.
Good.
Yeah.
I'll be in charge.
I'm in charge. You're in charge. Let's, let's try, let's try to figure out which direction we wanna go as soon as possible, because this is something we should have done a while then. Planning study of the village. It's something we need to do to prevent any more development, which is potentially out there, which I know the village is. So if you wanna lead the process of interviews, hook up with me. I'll gladly tag team with you. If we need to involve Jeff, because we did that initially, we'll pin him based on his availability and we'll move forward with that.
Great.
Thank you.
My little friend, she has a question I should ask of the trustee. The resident brought something up to me about Alton Field Road, that track pattern on that triangle, I'm sure. They said it's very dangerous. Who is the right person to address that? I don't want to take up the time of the board right now. Who looks at that? Did the, did the, does the resident have to say specifically what they're concerned about? And then is it our code enforcer? How not?
Which, look, which.
What's wrong?
Vice Scam, Vice Scam.
Scamming of the, like the triangle of people. It's like one, you know, sometimes people move out this way.
Vice Scam, you should ask, you don't worry.
Yeah, that's the end of the triangle. Nobody goes there except, yeah, people live there.
Yeah, that's, it's a weird thing.
If there is a problem.
Like, is there a way to make it a one-way, I think was what they were saying, like, can you?
So, so how about, how about, how about that, how about that, does it? Reach out to either Ronnie or myself, preferably in a nice, well-written email, so we know what they're looking at. And we'll analyze and see if we have to do a traffic inquiry or what, but one person's problem, solution might be another person's problem.
Maybe it's a boulder. That's probably what she's talking about. Boulder, not karibou. That makes sense. Yes.
I mean.
Now, yeah.
Let's, let us, have a detail to us and we'll, we'll investigate.
You know what else is a danger? When you come over the bridge on West Mountain Road, there's a little bridge there. The right and the first left is Boulder. Right? Is it Boulder? No, it's Mason.
Mason.
Mason, Mason, Mason. There's, there's a kind of a track, an island in the middle, but it's cars seem to think that they could go the one, the first side. It says, keep right when they go over there. If you were coming down it, a car could also keep right.
Yeah, I know, because it is kind of a long turn there. We can.
But you should do not enter sign. You know what I'm talking about?
Rich, why don't you take a peek, give us a reservation?
Sorry, write this down a little bit.
Water signs would not work on their.
You know what I'm talking about too?
I can tell you that.
And I'll have the resident.
It's wide enough for two cars to fit on both sides.
Correct, but it's a little hairy. You don't have to talk to.
Oh, one more.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so, Frank, through traffic to the left is, or whatever, through traffic to the right. I mean, that's, it's not meant for, other than for those residents, really.
Not, yeah, um, but that, I was just talking about the one on Boulder.
That's not the one, yeah, that's the one.
Boulder.
Oh, Boulder.
Yeah.
We're talking about that one.
It's a funky triangle, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
All right, we're gonna get a letter from the resident. We'll figure out what it is.
Next.
Ronnie, you have three more things.
Three more things. Okay, I'll talk to this. Arbor Day, this Friday is our Arbor Day observance. We are, are going to have our tree seedling giveaway. I will send out another comment, uh, comment. We're just going to contact. On Thursday, um, we got a request from the North Hempstead Country Club to have a fireworks chroming hearing on June fifth. The fireworks are scheduled for June thirtieth with the following day being the range day. And one additional, so we want to schedule a public hearing for that. And I also, we also want to schedule a public hearing for a landmark hearing for Seven West Shore Road.
Yes.
So we need to have a, I need a resolution to hold a public hearing on the fireworks.
So I'll make that motion.
And the landmark hearing.
Are they two separate motions? They are two separate, it's clear. All right, so I'm making, I'm making a motion for fireworks hearing. Do you have a second?
Okay, all in favor?
I'm.
Final member, do I have to recuse myself?
You're accused.
I mean, I just asked.
You're abstaining, okay. I mean, so in the hearing, I think you have to abstain on the vote too.
Bob, man, you remember the governor's request himself.
By the time you get to the board, it's.
You're not mandated. I just didn't know if I was allowed to.
Very good.
So I.
Good job.
Then, um, then a landmark hearing on Seven West Shore Road. And this, these are both for June fifth on the landmark hearing. I'll do a mailing.
And that is the last recommendation from the landmark commission from when they first met.
Okay, so as far as the landmark hearing, um, do I have someone or bring up a resolution and second? All in favor?
I.
And do I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Anyone want a second? Anyone want to go on? Okay, all in favor?
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Rich, for killing the time.